City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, April 13, 2015, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the Mayor's public announcements and proclamations. And even more important than the global award we've won is the fact that Alderman Burris, I'm not going to start crying, is leaving us. And Alderman Burris, in trying to find someone to replace you, I've gotten letters from your ward, I've had people come in and talk to me, I've gotten emails, and you're pretty hard to replace. You have done a terrific job, and people are very appreciative, and what they want in someone who'd represent your ward is basically you. So I think you're going to have to give up the whole thing and just call Northwestern and see if you've still got a job.[82.25][82.25](Laughter).
Last day was Friday.
Well, so on behalf of the City Council, I have. I've got more. I'm not done yet. I don't know about that. I might take up all the time.
It says, "Alderman Burris in recognition of dedicated service, 2009 to 2015."
That's from the staff and the council.
Thank you.[176.56][176.56](Applause).
Don't look happy. We're all sad about this.
I'm kind of sad about it, too.
Okay. All right, you want to go down, starting with Alderman Rainey?
It's almost like a relative has died, you know? The one that you liked.[206.62][206.62](Laughter). Well, I remember Colleen being on the Plan Commission, and I never really thought much of her decisions there. I remember the tower, I remember a few other things. But the night she got elected, she came to my house. And I just thought, there's something about her that isn't all bad. And so I gave her a chance, and it turned out that she's probably one of my favorite people ever. So I'll say some more at the Call of the Ward.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Oh, Anne, we'll be okay. We'll be okay. Colleen, do we share birthdays?
We do.
We haven't shared a lot of votes, but we have shared many votes. There have been some great ones that we've diverged on, but it's always been an interesting discussion. And it's been a pleasure for me getting together with you at least once a year in July.
With Wally.
With Wally, to celebrate our common birthdays. And I think we met in Leadership Evanston. You were a program participant, and I was running that program. And it was, I knew right away that you were going to be the right person for the job, and was just delighted when I learned that you were going to stand for election. So thank you for doing it twice. Thank you for being a public servant. You know what it takes to stand for election, and you know what it takes to take your turn in this job. And it's been interesting, and it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Colleen.
We're not going to recount any of our stories.
I'm not recounting anything. Actually, I'm going to speak on a very personal, serious note. But when I was going through some personal problems a few years ago, you were pretty much the only one that sort of became aware of that, and at least the only one that confronted me. Periodically, you would check in, are you okay? What's going on in your life? And I, you didn't do any more than that, because I didn't ask for any more of that. In fact, I tried probably to avoid you at times for that reason. But, yeah, and other reasons. But, you know, it was, I will always remember you and love you for that, because you were there if I needed you, and you were part of what made me finally realize I had to get help. And so you've been in my corner on that, and I really like that. So thank you so much.
Well, as you know, we didn't get off on a good foot in the beginning, but you really did.[377.31][377.31](Laughter). Well, we're being honest, right? I remember you from the Plan Commission as well, but I remember sitting beside you at the library at, when we were running, I think in 209. And I thought, this lady. But anyway, we did come to terms with each other in terms of learning, and I think that's one of the things that, as people get ready to come on the council, it's all about relationships and how you savage those. And it's work. It takes work. And I think we worked at it. And I knew that we had made it when you did one of my favorite things. And people who know me know that I love pens. And when you went away and came back and brought me a pen, I knew then that we had solidified this relationship. And I am going to miss you. I miss your questions, because you always have the question, and that is so important. Not that I always agree with it, but you always ask it, and I think that that's important. So you will be missed for that for me.
And Colleen, we met when we were candidates, way back, and...
Is that right in the back corner there?
Yeah, that's right.
Getting to me.
That's right.
We really want to do this?
We really want to do this. And that's really what it boils down to, is that we really want to do this. All of us up here want what's best for this city and what's best for the community. And we tend to think that our own personal way of doing it is the right way. And sometimes there's just not a right way, and there's not a wrong way, but there's maybe a compromise way.
Right.
And sometimes we're wrong, and sometimes we're right. But I'm pleased that most of the time you and I did vote the same way. That's been nice. But when we were candidates, we talked a bit about what we wanted and what our vision was. And I think that, I hope that you leave here knowing that you've accomplished a lot of it. I know that we still have a lot of work to do as a community in a lot of ways, but the Mayor's going to work hard to find somebody to at least fill one of your shoes and keep that moving forward. But in addition to the work and the accessibility and your willingness to talk about things at all times, even when we didn't agree, you've also been a good friend. So that's one thing that transcends the business relationship. So you've been there for conversations, to bounce things off of, a resource, but it's nice to have you as a friend throughout all of this as well. And that's what I appreciate the most.
Thank you, Don.
My turn. What am I going to say? Gosh, Colleen. I can see, you know...
You think these people didn't vote with me on staff?
What a lot of people don't realize is that the way the dais is set up here in the semicircle, Colleen and I look at each other all the time. So when we're talking, we're looking at each other. And so what I'll usually get is either some approval occasionally, some disapproval, like, mm, or, but it's always been a very, very interesting and interesting dynamic, one that I've appreciated very much. I wondered a few weeks ago, when I saw Colleen, and I was thinking to myself, I've never seen Colleen happier. It's just every, she was smiling and bouncing and being just, looking like she had the world by a string. And I hope that's the way you feel about where you're going and what you're going to be doing. You've had a lot of personal changes in your life, all of which are happy, and I think all of us are really, really glad about that. Colleen and I haven't voted a lot together, but I think when we do and when we have conversations, I think there's a lot of respect there. And I want you to know that I really value your personal integrity and your honesty. And I think there's a bravery there that is not connected with political expediency. And that's really important. It's really important, because it shows at the core, there's a real person there. And it's a person that I respect very much. As I've told you many times, I really like you.
Thanks.
Just we don't vote the same way. But I will miss you on that side. I will miss either the nods or the frowns or whatever goes along with that. But I really value your participation on the council, and truly, you'll be missed by everyone.
Thank you.
Alder...
Go ahead.
Alderman Rainey, did you...
I just want to say before we get into the meeting that it's very important to know that the reason Colleen is leaving is because of an amazing acknowledgement of her brilliance and her genius, really, in her field. And Princeton reached out across the country and found her. And I think that we're all very proud to know you.
Thank you.
And I think it's also important to say that...
Sure.
Could Colleen sphere, I don't know if everybody's here.
No, just Dave and Bo are here.
Bo? Bo is Colleen's brother. And Dave Skratzky is the first husband of the Ninth Ward.
Yes, my son is in Minnesota, so he's not there.
And the son is in Minnesota, anyway. So thanks for coming. Sorry it's such a sad night.
Thank you. I planned on doing this, a Call of the Wards, but it seems like this is maybe the appropriate time to just, to say if...
We can talk about you again, then.
Oh.
Go right ahead.
And I wrote this out, and because at the end, it's not going to be good, I'll be a mess. As you can imagine, the decision to move away from Evanston, thus resign from being the Ninth Ward Alderman, was a very difficult choice for me, leaving many trusted colleagues. And I thank you all for your very kind and honest words. I would expect nothing less from all of you. The talented city staff, oh my gosh, I've become friends with many of you and respect what you do. And the very supportive residents of the Ninth Ward. So this all is very melancholy, exciting for me professionally, but very sad on another note. I've had the privilege to serve the city of Evanston for really nine years, three years on the Plan Commission and six years as an Alderman. So basically, my entire 40s. Bob Seidenberg said I was 50 in an article, nobody, not till July. So someone came running in my office, you turned 50 when? I'm like, Bob Seidenberg's in a lot of trouble. Anyway, still 49. So I'm very fortunate to represent a ward with residents that have appreciated my platform of prioritizing fiscal responsibility, economic development, public safety, and delivering municipal services. I'm most grateful, really, to the Ninth Ward residents that embraced my common sense, direct approach, because I realized my style is not for everyone. But the Ninth Ward residents got it, and I will always be thankful for that, because when votes happened, I would get not-happy emails from other parts of the community the Ninth Ward residents always sent, yes, you're on the right track, you're doing the right thing, you're voting the way we want you to vote. And that made all the difference in being able to come up here and take a lot of hits a lot of nights. So thank you to all the residents that voted for me twice. So I really appreciate that. Despite the ups and downs and turbulence of Evanston government, I will always remember my time on this council fondly and proudly. We accomplished a great deal, as Alderman Wilson has said, and made substantial positive changes over the past decade. I will miss the debate and deliberation of this body while we've had some great arguments and we've gotten a lot done. It's challenged me intellectually and personally. I give a lot of thought to what you all say, believe it or not, and I have a lot of sleep nights after council meetings, as my husband will attest. Will wake up, he'll say, how'd you sleep? I'm like, I had consult last night, you know how I slept, I didn't sleep. So thank you for your service to the special community. It's not easy, but it is rewarding. You all put in a whole lot of time, I know. I'd be remiss without a few thank yous. Thank you to Anjana Hansen for suggesting I run for Alderman. She's a great friend and a colleague. My husband still won't forgive you for suggesting that I run, but that's okay. Don and Susan Bora, just amazing people, supportive. Dave Ream, Jane Baker, Sherilyn Robmuno, Tim Angel, Pat and Rita McCourt, some of the people that are really supportive. Wally Bobkowitz, I know he's not here tonight, but he's been such an inspirational leader. Under his direction, the city's staff have stretched their abilities, and he's encouraged creative thinking and innovation. He's proved transformational to this organization, and I just think it needs to be recognized. And I know we do it on a daily basis, but the community needs to know, he is steering us in a great way. We give him advice and he makes it happen. We are so lucky every day to have him. Mayor Diz Tisdale, thank you for your leadership, particularly supporting the city's efforts toward fiscal responsibility, ensuring that the city's concerns are heard by elected officials in Washington and Springfield. No one else could do it as well as you do it, and you're out there, and you tell us all, you know, come to Springfield, you know, email people in Washington. We couldn't get what we get without your support. Of course, I want to thank my wonderfully supportive husband, Dave, who you all know. I couldn't be here night after night without him. My brother Bo, who is also very helpful, a lot of leaflets being passed out, he's amazing. And this is the part that's the hardest for me, and I'm going to burst into tears. Alderman Rainey. Many of you know Alderman Rainey and I are very close, and I will miss you. She's my dearest friend, confidant, sage mentor, and I love you. Thank you. That's it for me.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. We have accomplished some great things together, and one of them that segues nicely into winning the Earth Hour Capital 2015 of the USA from the World Wildlife Foundation. You cannot take my picture with it, because I did not win it. The entire council and the entire community won it. This is what it looks like. I'll pass it down. Well, I went that way first. There we go. It was a hard-fought, lots of communities tried to do this, and in the end, we beat Seattle and Cleveland to win as the best city for green practices in the United States of America. And that is no small feat. So my congratulations to this council and to Citizens for a Greener Evanston and to the entire community, because that's who won it.
We love Evanston.
Well, it's not, we love Evanston, Jane. That's, that we didn't win, we came close, but...
We win every day.
But this one is more significant, because this is for green practices. And having been in South Korea and in China, people are wearing masks over their faces to be able to breathe the air. So this is an important, very critical issue for all of us. So my congratulations to all of you and to the entire community. And that's what it looks like. And congratulations to Catherine Hurley, our Director of Sustainability, who leads us all in the right direction. My other announcements are it's National Fair Housing Month and it's National Library Week. I don't know why the library only gets a week, but April 12th to 18th, and they are doing a community survey. Please fill it out. I think there are copies of the survey on the table where you sign up for public comments. So everyone, please help the library and fill out the survey. And it is also National Volunteer Week, April 12th to 18th. And Acting City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two announcements regarding Earth Day and Arbor Day, and also our Tree City will be presented by Paul D'Agostino, our Assistant Director for Public Works.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city clerk, and Acting City Manager Storley. First, I want to talk about our city's Evanston's cleanup Evanston. Community members are invited to participate this event in honor of Earth Day and Arbor Day on Saturday, April 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This year, there will also be mulching and tree plantings led by the Evanston Treekeepers in honor of Earth Day and Arbor Day at both the Lad Arboretum and Lovelace Park. Community groups and individuals of all ages can sign up to volunteer at any one of 10 designated cleanup locations across the city by visiting volunteers@evanston.org or calling or texting 847-448-4311. The 10 sites include Robert Crown Park, Elliott Park at the lakefront, Lad Arboretum, Cayman East Park, the lakefront Burnham Shores, James Park, Mason Park, Centennial Park at the lakefront, Dawes Park at the lakefront, as well as Lovelace Park. Volunteers should look for large cleanup Evanston signs as well as city public works vehicles to pick up their green refuse bags and gloves at each of the cleanup sites. And on a couple of related events on that same day, same time, Evanston Township High School is partnering with the Kiwanis Club of Evanston to hold their sixth annual Earth Day cleanup event on April 25th as well. Student and community volunteers can meet at the Dodge Avenue entrance of ETHS, starting at 9:00 a.m. And will focus primarily on areas in the city's second and fifth wards. Interested community members can contact ETHS Community Services Coordinator, Mary Collins, at 847-424-7662 to sign up, or they can just show up. The West End Business District Cleanup is also beholding their annual spring cleanup event and are encouraging residents in their area to join them on April 25th at 9:00 a.m. to walk through the neighborhood to pick up litter and then gather at Ermco afterwards for refreshments. Interested residents should contact Jennifer Callis at 224-420-4210 for more information. And then, secondly, this almost seems like it's getting repetitious. For the 31st year in a row, the city of Evanston has been awarded for the Tree City USA for 2014. We are still in the top 10 cities in the state for receiving this award for consecutive years. We continue to make improvements to our urban forestry program year after year, and 2014 was no exception. Our dedicated staff has been able to maintain the elm injection program by completing over 200 injections last summer in all of our parks, while a local contractor injected 1,503 trees throughout the city, which kept our Dutch elm disease losses last year to 1% of the overall elm population. Forestry staff also trimmed nearly 1,000 Parkway trees and unfortunately had to remove over 600 trees, mostly due to emerald ashore. New Parkway tree plantings increased to over 500 in 2014, and that's for a couple of reasons. We implemented a Replant Express program that allows residents to directly pay for their new Parkway tree and have it planted during the next planting season rather than waiting the typical now two years to get a new tree. And the second is the iHeart Evanston Trees fundraising efforts that solicited donations specifically to purchase and plant more new trees. These two efforts generated nearly $15,000 in additional funding, which went directly into our tree planting efforts. And so far in 2015, both of these programs have shown strong support already this year. Evanston has also received the Tree City USA Growth Award for the 14th year, and this award is for communities that go above and beyond what the requirements of the Tree City USA. Excuse me, the city received this growth award based on two activities that took place in 2014. The first was our participation in both the Earth Day Arbor Day cleanup last year and tree planting at the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, and then October's United Way Evanston Day of Caring cleanup efforts as well last fall. The second activity that helped us achieve this growth award was the completion of a GIS-based tree inventory of all of our public trees on city property. Based on this inventory, we have between planting sites and trees, 34,200 trees and planting sites citywide. I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council and City Manager Bobkowitz especially for your continued support for our urban forestry program, as well as all the hard work of my staff. Neither of these awards would have been possible without all of us working together. And now, Madam Mayor, I'd like to present you with our 2014 Tree City USA.
And Mr. Lyons, I suppose, has to call on you. Go right ahead. I think Alderman Burris should know what the staff thinks.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Alderman Burris. Sorry we got a little bit out of order, but the night wouldn't be complete if the staff didn't have a chance to talk about a list of memorable moments with Alderman Burris. So I asked them to put together a few memorable moments, but, seriously, on a more serious note, I will just tell you that the staff would like to thank Alderman Burris for all of her years of service, her direct style of communication, offering praise when earned and criticism when deserved. We appreciate it. I checked out a lot of the newspapers today and heard comments such as fiscal hawk or conservative. And I would amend that characterization to state that Alderman Burris, from a staff perspective, was all about transparency with what we were doing and efficiency. Many people think her goal was to cut services. Her goal was to cut costs and increase services, and we appreciate that greatly. One of my favorites, you shouldn't let the CFO do a part of this speech, because I heard so many of you say you didn't always agree with some of her votes, I can say we always agreed on the debt votes. It was very interesting that Alderman Burris voted for every bond issue, and at every time said, we should not be issuing debt, but she realized how much we needed to do for our capital program. So I know that all of the capital staff managing projects appreciated your support in all of those areas. And finally, thank you very much for your insights on fundraising. We really wish you weren't leaving, because we have a very big fundraising project. We just received our proposals in, and we will miss your insights, and staff will miss you greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is public comment. I'm going to call the first four speakers, and you each have three minutes. Junad Rizki, Betty Esther, Jean Linwall, and Mary Rosinski.
Unfortunately, we have no taxpayer money for Harley Clark, but now we have taxpayer money possibly for a bowling alley. Harley Clark is coming back. It's coming back, and what is the transition plan here? Wally's plan is to possibly board the building up. On Sunday, there were hundreds of community members at Harley Clark, because the Arts Center had an open house. Artists were in the studios, children... It's very interesting how this place is working. Also, having toured that building and went up to the attic space, we looked at the roof, understructure of the roof, it's dry. Very little is wrong with it. Nothing, really. The building's structurally sound. And this is from someone who's worked as an engineer and an architect for many years. Yes, the building does need work. Of course it does. It's got old mechanicals and electricals and other things that need to be looked at. But the fact is, the community can use this building, and people can use it. Tonight, also, I want to get off, because the issue is money. We're going to probably, you're going to approve 1571 Maple, but I've done some FOIA-ing on this thing and realized the city's going to lose $5 million. So, as we lose more and more money here when we do these deals, just keep in mind, we don't have money for Harley-Clark. My analysis pretty much showed that basically, you spend $60 a month to rent, to actually operate a space, and you're going to get 85 a month, not including capital. So, this thing is a huge loser of money. The $400,000 is peanuts. You're losing almost 10 times that. And frankly, this loss of money, and we don't have money, and you sit up here and say we wouldn't have money for Harley-Clark, frankly, that's nonsense. And recently, someone asked me, though, that I should put together a list of all the things that have gone on here with the money, and I've compiled a list of 30 items. And I will soon be publishing that list, and I will bring it to meetings like this, and I'll probably bring it to a meeting on Harley-Clark, and distribute it to the citizens. And those citizens will get a good idea where the money went here. So, when you say to the citizens, "There's no money," the citizens will know who was responsible for the loss of that money. Thank you.
Thank you.
As you remembered back in 2012, 2011, that building was before you, it was, came before you, and you took the building away from the community. It was being worked on to be a, like, history museum. The people that was working and doing the repair works and stuff on the building was not professional people. So, the building sat there, then the city made a decision to, well, we will have to do something with the building, which is correct. You sold it to the Evanston North Shore Contractor Cooperative LLC for a dollar. And you gave them a timeline to finish the work. It was February 2015. Then it came to light that, hey, these people are not in compliance with that agreement, just like the city wasn't, the community wasn't. The community didn't have the skill, the maybe the know-how and everything. Here, you have contractors and things, they're supposed to be professional and know this. They had a purpose. The purpose was to have home-on repair building contractors in there. And it was told, and it was interesting to see this, to say, well, the contractors is not interested in renting office space. We talked about that when they was looking at that, that the contractors and things here in Evanston was home-based, had been in business for years, and they wasn't looking for office space. What they need, what they are talking about now, the hope to do, is have space to store supplies. They are saying, well, they hope to do this, but it would be at some other location. Who is going to pay for that other location? So, I don't think we should. What I think should happen, in all fairness to the community, is that you take the building back and sell it on the open market for money that we can put into the general funds that will help us meet our debt, because each day, we hear about money that the city is losing. According to Marty Lyons, it might not be a million dollars, we hope to get some of it back, but hoping having it is two different things. So, with this, I think we should take that building back to treat them the same way that you treated the community people, and sell it on the open market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jean Lindwall. I don't know if the problem lies with the city manager and his staff, who seem more interested in burnishing their resumes by entering social media contests touting Evanston as the best this or that, or if it's the current council that has made it pretty clear that their development friends and influential donors are more important than the wishes of ordinary citizens. But there's clearly a disconnect. National awards are nice, but I'd much rather have the emphasis be on capital improvement projects that stand the test of time. Why is it that the permeable sidewalk installed around the parking lot at Central and Stewart is already crumbling? Why is the Sheridan Road pavement at the south end of Evanston deteriorating before plans and specs have even been completed for the north end of Sheridan? There are certainly communities experimenting with reducing or eliminating parking requirements in transit-rich environments. While some parking reduction for 1571, the 1571 Maple project may be appropriate, is it really necessary to demonstrate that Evanston is progressive community by eliminating the on-street parking requirement entirely? It's clear that many of you are still interested in pursuing the sale of lakefront parkland for private development. Not providing the Harley-Clark Committee with a clear directive that takes the sale of land off the table may provide some kind of rationale for you to do whatever it is you want. However, I believe that the citizens of Evanston want their elected officials and city staff to be good stewards of our parks, public facilities, and other community assets. If you're not willing or able to act for the collective good, perhaps it's time for new leadership to take your place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me, my name's Mary Rosinski. I have three different comments. One is, I'd like to follow up with what Jeanie just said, and I would hope that there's a real vision to keep our lakefront. I'd like to just show you, the black part of the area is the parkland for Harley-Clark. And this is a whole lakefront site that would be very harmed if that were to go private. It's really for the public. We bought it back in 1963, I think, or '69, for $265,000. It was one of the best investments we ever made. It was four acres, including the beach, and today, it would probably be worth somewhere in the 10, 12, 13 million dollar mark, if it could even be found anywhere on the North Shore. So, I'm just saying, it was a good investment for the people, and it's free, and our people need a beautiful lakefront. We just got an award for being green. I say, let's keep it green. Okay, that side aside, the second thing I wanted to let people know is, Dejé Coleman Foundation Awards are coming up, May 3rd. Tickets are $40, they can be bought online. And Dejé Coleman, to empower our youth, and they would give scholarships out for $1,000 each to two children who are freshmen. And the last announcement is for the Evanston, it's telecommunications week. And so, for all our 911 operators, you know, don't call them and say, "Thank you." Just if you're in the station, stop and say, "Hello, thank you." And this is the 12th through the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carl Bova, Peggy Tarr, and Barbara Janes.
Good evening again, Carl Bova, from 1322 Rosely Street. First, my comments about Harley-Clark. I've watched and participated in the community's public participation aspects of that committee, and I can tell you that some of the estimates that I have seen and read on the city's website are grossly exaggerated. The cost, the cost for windows, for instance, $700,000 to replace windows, I doubt it. Five and a half to $6 million, I doubt it. The answer is pay-as-you-go and a phased development. The first phase, which I'll call Phase Zero, costs nothing. You walk right in, and you engage in the same kind of classes and camps as you have right now. The second, third, and fourth phases happen over a period of time. When the need arises, redevelop. That's all I have to say right now on Harley-Clark. As for 1571 Maple, I distributed this evening a copy of an email that I sent to each of the, to each the mayor and the city council, and I'd like to paraphrase a few of the items I have in here, but not exaggerate them. The code requirements for onsite parking serves a broader community. It reduces congestion on the public right-of-way, allows for prompt responses by emergency personnel, facilitates street cleaning, infrastructure work, and delivery of goods and services. It enhances pedestrian safety and improves the quality of life. Spill over onto the streets thwarts all of these community values. As for the garages, the actual use and reserve capacity is in the range of 75% to 85%, not 55% as a consultant to the developer has stated. Intended uses that are regularly exercised or planned for the garages, that is, the excess capacity, include the broader community, of course. Downtown growth for employees and visitors, special events, free holiday parking, emergencies such as stripping streets for snow removal, for major garage maintenance in which whole or parts of garages are not available. You might recall that there was a discussion in this council related to the Maple Garage having to be constructed so that the folks who were using the old Sherman Garage had a place to go. That's what I'm talking about, the excess capacity being used at all these garages. Once again, it's time for the city to stop this haggling about parking ratios and conduct an unbiased assessment of the situation. Why is it that neighbors who seem to recount their real and personal accounts of on-street parking, street congestion, and aesthetics, and visual problems with oversized developments never seem to be addressed by resounding calls for developers to modify their plans? Even in this case, increasing affordable housing contribution by some fraction of the savings to the developer is not a substitute for poor functional design. Saying no to 1571 would send a clear message. We're not that desperate to have to agree to every development. This city appears to be undervaluing itself and underappreciated by staff or some officials. We are far more deserving of a better 1571 that is sadly being marketed as bold, or something whose time has come. It is only a problem waiting to be realized if approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My goodness, dare I say anything after that? Anyway, I'm Peggy Tarr, I live at 907 Sherman Avenue. I've not yet received a response from Police Chief Eddington to my March 11th letter that asked that Chief Eddington let me know in writing whether Evanston police officers will or will not respond to complaints about Revolution X noise. Some Evanston police officers ask that I request this information for them also. I did receive a letter from Chief Eddington dated April 6th, in which he cites part of City Code 9-5-20 on noise violations. He states that a clandestine sound survey of Revolution X and a similar sound check was conducted at another workout studio called Orange Theory, which is located at 2800 Central Street, that has also been the focus of complaints. I don't know how or where these sound surveys were done, but on the evening of February 16th, a neighbor and I observed an officer doing a sound survey, or a decibel reading, for Revolution X, which is located several lots north of Main Street at 904-906 Sherman Avenue. The officer was on the opposite side of the street from Revolution X and at the corner of Main Street and Sherman Avenue. On April 2nd, I called the police to complain about noise from a Revolution X class that started at 6:00 a.m. When I called a second time, because no officer had shown up, I was told that an officer had been dispatched. A resident that lives south of Main Street happened by while I was waiting outside my building and commented on how she could hear noise from Revolution X where she lives. A police car drove past us slowly, but did not stop. I called the police department again, and this time was connected to the supervisor. I reported that a police car had driven past, but had not stopped. The supervisor came out, but by this time, the class had ended. However, the supervisor did speak to the instructor of the class. Evanston has an ordinance against noise before 7:00 a.m. Revolution X was fined several years ago for this noise violation. The City of Cicero has progressed beyond Evanston as far as citizens' complaints about noise. Cicero citizens can complain about noise, and a ticket can be written, even if the noise is stopped by the time an officer arrives. The City of Evan, pardon me, the City of Cicero is aware that sometimes the offenders learn that the police are coming and stop the noise before the police officers arrive. Revolution X website states that Revolution X is closing the end of May and blames a couple of residents for this decision. Perhaps the fact that many residents and business owners signed a petition to try to get the City of Evanston to make Revolution X soundproof its studio has been forgotten. By the way, I want to thank you, Alderman-Burris, for your kind words at the last March 23rd meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Janes. I have been attending city council and Harley-Clark Committee meetings for months. During this time, I have noticed some disturbing situations. Both the city council and Harley-Clark Committees have asked city staff for information to help make informed decisions about the future of the Harley-Clark Building and surrounding parkland. The requested information has not been provided. Why has this information not been provided? When the Harley-Clark Committee was formed, first formed, at least one alderman and the mayor said that the city should go back to IDNR and its new administration to inquire as to whether IDNR was still interested in occupying Harley-Clark. The Harley-Clark Committee tosses around the continued possibility of IDNR coming to Evanston, but no one from the city has contacted IDNR to inquire as to their interest. But they have made, if they had made such an inquiry, the results have not been made public. Given the considerable positive interest of IDNR at our lakefront, not contacting the new administration seems strange. Why is this so, and is it too late, and do we have an appointment in Springfield tomorrow? In the fall, at least one alderman asked the city staff to provide reliable numbers for the cost of deconstructing the building. This information has not been provided. What has been provided is an estimate of how much it would cost to obtain the demolition cost. This makes no sense. Deconstruction costs should be easy to obtain. The Harley-Clark Committee has asked at least once for the actual cost of operating the Harley-Clark Building. This operation, this information has not been provided. Why? Given the resources of the city staff, one has to wonder if there is some ulterior motive in not providing the information to the mayor's appointed committee. The city council has clearly said it wants hard data to accompany any submitted proposals. How can the committee make informed decisions? And then... How can the committee make informed decisions and then recommendations without reliable data? I therefore request you, the Evanston City Council, to direct the city manager to provide the Harley Clark Committee with all of the requested information by their next meeting. Time is running out. Evanston citizens are beginning to have questions about the whole purpose of this committee. Please give them that information. And direct the city manager to provide that information. On a totally different note, I noted in the CIP, the list of capital improvement projects, that for 2017, there was a proposal for a dog beach purchase of a portable pathway system for the beach. Where did this idea come from? I have never heard of anyone at the dog beach asking for such a thing. Any money spent would be better spent on a new, appropriate, proper fence, or fixing the fencing at the entranceway, or repairing the inner gate, or making sure that there is a properly functioned punch-in gate. A portable walkway? Use the money for something that the people who use the dog beach really could use. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know that I have met with the governor twice. I may be meeting with him again tomorrow, but there is no possibility that the governor is interested in putting millions into a mansion by the lake. He is very interested in cutting costs. If he found that money had been put aside for that, he would sweep it immediately. The governor has been very clear about his concerns about the budget. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 23rd. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval for the payroll, $2,619,595.20. The bills, $4,519,484.79. Credit card activity, $115,676.51. We ask your approval for the contract with Crave LLC to operate concessions at the Evanston Lakefront for the 2015 season. Your approval is requested for the Northeastern Illinois Public Safety Training Academy 2015 membership dues in the amount of $23,545. Approval of engineering services agreement with CDM Smith for rehab of the water plants 1914 and 1924, that's when they were built, Clearwells, in the not-to-exceed amount of Approval of a contract award is requested to Philato Construction, Inc., for the 2015 animal shelter roof replacement. Your approval is also requested for the 2015 motor fuel tax street resurfacing construction contract with A-Limp Contractors in the amount of $1,378,359.40. Your approval is requested also for the purchase of unique paving material, which is cold patch, from Peter Baker &amp; Son in the amount of $50,000. We also ask your approval for contract renewal with Carquest for auto parts in the amount of $60,000. And approval is requested as well for the purchase of trees and planting services for spring planting from Suburban Tree Consortium for 150 trees in the amount of $80,524.76. Your approval is also requested for the change order number three for the 48-inch diameter water intake improvements with Lake Erie Diving in the amount of $41,074. Also requested is approval of a letter of commitment for the youth organization Umbrella, Y-O-U, for their street outreach program. They wish that we'll sign a letter of commitment by April 1st, which is passed, to provide our current level of participation in the program for another granting cycle, which is four years. Next is A6. Staff recommends council approval to refer the Parks and Facilities 2016-18 draft plan, CIP plan, to the Parks and Recreation Board for review. The committee also asks your approval for Resolution 41R15, which authorizes an amendment to the TIF construction loan agreement with Evanston North Shore Contractors Cooperative. We ask your approval also for Resolution 37R15, which authorizes the manager to execute the local agency amendment number one for federal participation in the Illinois Department of Transportation for Dempster Street Traffic Signal Modernization and Coordination Project. The total amount is $1,195,000. We ask your approval to authorize a right-of-way agreement with Unite Private Networks for the installation of dark fiber optic cable and the public right-of-way to be leased by Evanston Skokie School District 65. For introduction tonight is Ordinance 40015, authorizing the manager to execute a lease agreement for city-owned property at 1804 Maple Street to farm cam, to operate a medical cannabis dispensary. Ordinance 44015 is the beginning of several ordinances having to do with liquor that are for introduction. This is decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Agum On on Clark, doing business at 1720 Clark Street as Clark's. Ordinance 45015, decreasing the number of Class D licenses for Mount Prospect Venture, known as Giordano's, 1527 Chicago Avenue. It's been closed. Ordinance 41015, oh fifteen, I'm sorry, amends the city code, creating a new Class F1 liquor license. This allows grocery stores to sell alcohol for off-site consumption and sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. Ordinance 48014 increases the number of F1 licenses for Whole Foods Market Group, doing business as Whole Foods Market, 2748 Green Bay Road. Ordinance 46015 amends the city code to allow for the sale of beer in 22-ounce containers for off-site consumption. Also for introduction is Ordinance 47015, amending the city code by creating a new Class P3 liquor license for craft wineries. Ordinance 49015 is new ordinance, amending the city code to remove the Evanston Arts Center and add Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center as the authorized city-owned building for special one-day liquor license. And we have Ordinance 38015, which amends the city code, Section 726D, sidewalk cafes, allowing the sale of wine at wine shops and Oteka sidewalk cafes. Ordinance 24015 has to do with taxing medical marijuana. Is this supposed to be off the consent agenda?
No, go ahead.
No?
Okay.
All right. Taxing medical marijuana. It imposes a tax on the cultivation center for the privilege of cultivating medical cannabis at a rate of 6% of the sales price per ounce. This is for action and it is allowed by an enabling statute. Ordinance 29015 is for action. It authorizes the manager to negotiate for the sale of city-owned property at 1821 Ridge Avenue. Under Planning and Development, does anybody have anything to take off here?
Would you remove P4, please?
Okay. Ordinance 43015, Plan Development, 1620 Central Street, is for introduction. Ordinance 36015 is for action, grants a special use for a convenience store accessory type two restaurant, Ad Val Suite at 900 Chicago Avenue. Approval is requested for Ordinance 37015, grants a special use for type-two restaurant, Epic Burger, at 1622 Sherman Avenue. P4 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 20015 is for action, amends the text of the zoning ordinance by enacting a new section having to do the Dempster-Maine overlay district. Ordinance 25015, also for action, amends a zoning map to place certain properties within the Dempster-Maine overlay district. Ordinance 19015 is a planned development at 1571 Maple. Several changes were made for this and it is for action tonight.
Could you remove that? Could you remove P6?
Resolution 40R15, acceptance of affordable, do you want me to take this one off, too? Resolution 40R15, acceptance of affordable housing fund contribution from 1571 Maple Avenue Plan Development. It has to do with a $400,000 contribution and a, I think I want to take this one off. Human Services Committee, Resolution 35R15, P7 will be addressed by the committee chair, by the way. Human Services Committee, Resolution 35R15, for action, authorizes the manager to execute artist leases for space at Noise Cultural Arts Center. And Madam Mayor has made a whole lot of appointments tonight, recommending for the Commission on Aging, Jesse McDonald, Economic Development Committee, Amadou Drum, Lad Arboretum Committee, Tom Klitsky, Mental Health Board, Michael Pierce, Parks and Recreation Board, Emily DiStefano, Plan Commission, Simon Belile, Plan Commission, Peter Isaac, Public Safety Service Commission, Joan Hickman, Keith Terry, and Selena Green. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Seven to nothing, the consent agenda is passed. Alderman Burris, did you have anything from Administration and Public Works? You don't get to make a last report.
No, I do not. I just have, the only thing is, Alderman Braithwaite asked that there be a referral to AP&amp;W regarding the taxing of the medical marijuana, of what we do with that tax once it comes in, but it was just a referral, it's not to keep it off the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Fisk, Planning and Development.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked for P4 to be off the consent agenda. It's Ordinance 22015, the text amendment for fences and invisible pet fences. It's on for action this evening, and if someone wants to make a motion.
Move approval.
Sir, second. Thank you.
Okay. I don't support invisible fences for animals in the city, but I did have a question for legal staff, and that is, if we do allow installation of these fences, what's, is there a potential liability for us if an animal escapes the invisible fence and attacks a person or other animal?
Madam Mayor, members of council, grant for our corporation council. If it's a private animal on private property that transits to public property, I still think the first plaintiff, the first defendant on any caption would be the owner of the animal itself. Having said that, we live in a very actively litigated environment, and so actions that may not be necessarily grounded in facts or law are still filed against the city every day.
We know that, unfortunately. Okay, well, thank you for answering that question. So that's my only comment about that.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, you know, Alderman Fisk, I don't support them either, but they're currently allowed, and so maybe just by regulating them, I don't know, maybe there's something to that.
I have one question. Are you contemplating having people move their fences who have already installed fences?
I don't want him to do any. I don't know where this came from. Oh, it's his fault, so talk to him.
Alderman Tindham?
Thank you.
Those folk who've already put in a fence, are you suggesting that they are grandfathered in, or are they expected to move it?
I'm not suggesting. It was not brought up in the ordinance, I don't know what the, I don't have a suggestion that they move them, because they, we're not illegally installed, we have nothing to govern fences of this kind, so I would, I don't know, I'm not a legal person, but I would say they're probably grandfathered in, unless there's an incident that would, you know, make them be a nuisance, that then we could probably find a case for setting them in, but I, it wasn't, I don't think it was discussed as part of the ordinance.
Okay. So Attorney Ferrari? I have a family member that has a fence that we're about to make illegal, possibly.
I don't think that there would be an issue here, however, Director Munzer may be able to shed additional light on this particular issue, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good afternoon, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council, Mark Munzer, Director of Community Development. That was not contemplated, but considering that there was not a requirement for someone to get a permit for a pet fence, previously tried to say that fast, we would consider it non-conforming, and we, they would not have to come in and move their fence.
Thank you very much. All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 22015. Does anyone have any further comment on it? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Six to one. The motion, what was it? Six to two, the motion passes. Six to one, sorry, we've got two missing Alderman. Alderman Fisk, do you have more?
There's, okay, never mind. Yes, I do. P6, Ordinance 19015, the Plan Development at 1571 Maple Avenue, it's on for action Did someone move? I didn't move.
I would move.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. I asked for this to be taken off the agenda, I intend to vote against it. As I've said all along, I have serious concerns about allowing this much parking to be so far off-site and used at a city parking garage. I don't believe that's what we intended the parking garages to be used for. The extraordinary benefit to the developer, I think, is above and beyond what we ought to be doing and the direction we ought to be moving in the future.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And we discussed this previously, but just to reiterate a couple of points, I don't want the rest of the world to get the idea, in other words, other developers out there, that this is the new order of business. So to me, this is an experiment. The primary factor here, as far as my decision to not require parking, is in large part to minimize the impact on the adjacent property. If we were to require the parking, there would be a much greater negative impact to the adjacent property, and I'd like to, you know, support those neighbors as much as possible, in conjunction with the transit-oriented nature of the project. I also want to mention that the developer has come to us with a pretty extraordinary affordable housing proposal, extraordinary in a good sense. So I'm grateful for that, that contribution and the effort that's going to go into that aspect of the public benefits.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, I think we're ready to vote. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Six to one, the motion passes. Alderman Fisk?
I think that's it.
Resolution 40R15, I believe Alderman Rainey?
That was on the consent agenda?
No.
Oh, was it off? I'm sorry.
She took it off.
Okay, that's Resolution 40R15, acceptance of affordable housing fund contribution for 1571 Maple Avenue, planned development.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I move it.
Okay, and a second?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think this is an extraordinary agreement that our staff reached with the developer. However, the piece that I'm very concerned about is how the money is, the $400,000, is administered and by whom. And so I hope that before anything is done on that, you come to us so that we can thrash this out because I'll just leave it at that. I'm very, very concerned about turning this money over to a not-for-profit to administer and rehab units in the downtown district, okay? So, all right, before the night we're supposed to vote on it, could we get information? You don't have to -- I mean, as long as you agree to that, that's what I want, okay? Because I want to support you.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add my support to what Alderman Rainey said about this. I am first to the developers, thank you so much. It's such a creative idea and I'm very, very happy to support it. I hope staff will also talk to the Housing Commission in terms of some of their ideas about where and how this should be done before it comes back to us. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with that, and it's very difficult when the not-for-profit isn't named. We have no idea who you're talking about, and asking us to vote on this is difficult. So we're placing our trust in you and in Alderman Rainey and Alderman Holmes.
Thank you. All right, it's -- P7, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, I believe that brings us to call of the wards. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Alderman Burris, send us postcards, let us know how things are going. We'll watch for you on the internet, but best wishes to you.
Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I just want to say one more thing, Colleen. One thing I like about you is consistent, you know, you are consistent, and I like that. Consistency is one of the things I really appreciate in you. But I also want to say that this past weekend, the -- I attended this Selma screening at Fleetwood Jordan on Saturday, which was -- I've seen Selma and I encourage people to see it, but it was a wonderful -- after viewing the movie, there was a wonderful discussion with the panel, with the director of education from Garrett and another professor from Oakton and a couple other people on the panel, and just the discussion of having families who came and brought their kids because it was from 11, ages 11 to 18. A wonderful afternoon in terms of listening to where young people are about why people need to vote, and it was just so important because voting had just happened on Tuesday and unfortunately in Evanston, as around the country, the turnout was not great, and I think that's something that we all have to keep pushing, that voting is so important because your vote is your voice, and we have to get that, make sure that young people understand and know that. The second thing is that this Thursday is the Fifth Ward Meeting at Thursday, Fleetwood, 7 o'clock. You are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam -- thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to mention two passings in the Sixth Ward this past month. The first one, both of these people are longtime residents of the Sixth Ward and very, very active in our community. Jan Otwell was a woman who was quite active, both -- yes, she passed away. She was active in Illinois government under the Governor Thompson Cabinet, Midwest Director of ARP. She worked, headed the Illinois Department of Aging, and she even late in life, you would see her very active with the League of Women Voters who do things like monitor this meeting. Thank you. She was a wonderful woman, a great mentor, and she'll be missed. The other person is Bill Whitney. Bill is sort of a self-made man, a Navy guy who went in, studied at Northwestern to be an engineer and became an inventor of many medical products. He had his own company, WG Whitney, and he also served with the city, the Zoning Board of Appeals for many years. And late in life, as Jan Otwell was involved with the League, Bill decided to take up flying, and he was a mentor to a lot of young people who had that same desire. So I think the message here is stay active, stay busy as you can, and be connected with your community. They both love this community dearly, and they will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for making the trip to Korea last week on our behalf.
My pleasure.
For all your efforts. First, congratulations to all of our new school board members-elect, and thank you to everyone who ran for election last week. I can't say it enough, it's good when you take your turn, and I am much appreciative of those who do. Reminder that we can recycle all of our yard signs, so all those yard signs that were all over the city last week, every component of them is recyclable with our normal collection. And to Colleen Burris and her family, Colleen, congratulations on a great opportunity, securing it for yourself, and all the best to you and your family as you make this move. We'll miss you in the community, not just at council, but in the community, for sure. Thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I -- I'm going to take a little turn here. I'm getting really fed up with the council bashing that goes on here, and I want to say to the television audience, because I know there is one, that just because you hear it at that podium does not make it true. And some of the comments tonight made about the Harley-Clark Committee just really foul and off-base. We have received so much information, it's almost, you know, you almost can't organize it and control it and plan for it. So it's just, it's not true. And no one has said anybody's spending any money on a bowling alley. Nobody has given anything to the contractors. They took a piece of junk, a building that was falling apart, and after begging others for 20 years to come forth and make it right, nobody came forth except them. And so to stand up there and say the city should take that building back is shameful. Shame on you for saying that. That building is going to be the pride and joy of that block, one of them, along with Morrison-Gibbs. But it's just wrong to sit here after, you know, years and years of trying to make things good, to hear people who have nothing better to do but to come up here and bash us, and I apologize for them to all of you. And then I want to say one last thing to my friend, Colleen, who I will say is probably one of the smartest people I know. And, you know, to say, oh, sometimes we disagree, something, you know, that wasn't the important thing. The important thing was that it didn't matter. It didn't matter in the final analysis that there was an agreement or a disagreement. I know when people talk to me, they often say, you know, I really like you, man, but I really disagree with most. You know, that sort of takes away from the endearing comment at the beginning. So I want to tell you that even though you had a hitch in your giddy app that one night, I promised Lully I would say that tonight, that, you know, just your intelligence and your brilliance has always made it so easy to be your friend, really, because you have common sense in addition to, because a lot of people are told they have common sense so they've got nothing else, but you have it and the genius and the intelligence and just street smarts, all kinds of smarts, and you're just a pleasure to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you didn't mention, I've never heard any discussion from the Harley-Clark group or this group about selling public land to buy the beach. I don't know where that comes from.
It comes from made-up people who have nothing better to do than make up stories. That's what I think, you know, and I'm, I know it's not politically correct to attack people who speak at the podium, but somebody's got to say it.
Well, it's not attacking to say the community can be calm, we're not about to start selling parkland.
Well, but that's not the worst of it. I mean, the worst of it is that those are attacks that are very unwarranted, except by people who don't have enough self-confidence to participate in the process.
Alderman Burris?
Thank you very much. I want to say congratulations to Pat McCourt, who won reelection to the Ridgeville Park District Commission. He is a tough race, and he came out on the, had more votes at the end, so I'm very excited about that. He's been a real service to the community and will continue to work closely with the Aldermen that are in the Ridgeville area as well and whoever my successor is. So again, thanks, Pat, for your years and years of service. I also want to thank the council for your honest and thoughtful words. Wouldn't expect anything less out of all of you, so I appreciate that. I've been honored, really, to serve with you and to, again, for the staff. And lastly, thank you, Ninth Ward residents, you've been amazing. Bye.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have?
Madam Mayor, could we just say one thing about Rodney?
Oh.
Wish him the best.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, yes. Clerk Green is ill, and we wish him all the best and hope he is back with us soon, but not too soon, Rodney.
Take your time.
Yeah. Right. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C11, and C21.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to point out, in case the city manager is watching, how wonderfully the acting city manager got us through at an extraordinarily early hour.